Good evening, welcome to the City of Boynton Beach City Commissioners Meeting today, Tuesday, August 4th, 2020 at 5:30 PM. Alan, would you please provide an introduction?
Yes, thank you. Hello and welcome. My name is Alan Cardjelineen and I will be providing assistance to the mayor and elected officials during today's meeting. Before we start, I'd like to review a few housekeeping items so the public audience knows how to participate. Your microphones have been muted to reduce background noise during this public meeting. There will be specific times during this meeting when members of the public can ask questions and provide feedback. The first way is by typing their question into the questions section at the bottom of the GoToWebinar interface. Those items will be read into the record by a meeting organizer at the appropriate time. Please be sure to include your name for the record. The second way is by using the GoToWebinar interface and clicking on the Raise Hand option. A meeting organizer will announce the speaker and unmute their audio, at which time the speaker should state their name for the record. Before speaking, please take steps to minimize any sources of background noise and speak clearly into your device during your allotted time. I will now turn control over to Mayor Stephen Grant, who will be presiding over today's meeting.
Thank you, Alan. First, we'll have an invocation led by Pastor Rodney Wilkinson of Gospel Fellowship, led by the, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Commissioner Justin Katz. Rodney, are you there? You see, your microphone's unmuted. Oh, your microphone went away. Alan, do you know if, what that means when the microphone goes away?
Mayor, I'll check into the administrative end of it right now if you'd like. It may take a moment. I don't know what the technical problem is right at the moment, but I'll check right away.
It came back, I think, Mayor. It shows muted.
Self-muted, alright. Rodney, you want to try? You can hear us, your... Hold on, I'll unclick it. Alright, it shows that it keeps on getting muted by the organizer. Rodney, can you speak into the microphone?
Green.
Oh, yes. Oh, is that not him?
He's on.
Yeah. Alright. Just gonna have to try. Commissioner Hay, would you mind doing the invocation?
I'd be honored to.
Thank you.
Let us pray. Let us pray. Father God, we are grateful for this day and opportunity to come together to make decisions for this great city of Boynton Beach. We ask now that you bless each member of this commission. Bless our mayor and bless our city manager and all of her staff. We pray, Father, for those families that have been affected by this storm and hurricane. We thank you, Father, for what you've done and what you're doing, what you will do in the future. We invite your presence now to come into this meeting. Touch each and every commissioner's heart. That decision that we make will be for the betterment of this great city. We give it all in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, may I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Stephen B. Grant?
Present.
Vice Mayor Pinzerga?
Present.
Commissioner Justin Katz?
Here.
Commissioner Woodrow L. Hay?
Here.
Commissioner Christina L. Romulus?
Present.
Mayor, we have a call.
Alright, thank you. Any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? The only thing I saw was that item 6B should be under consent bids and purchases over 100,000. So I'd like to move 6B to 7E. And that's it for me. Seeing no more. Commissioner Romulus, was that a motion to approve as amended?
It was.
Alright, thank you. May I have a second?
I will second that.
Thank you, Commissioner, Vice Mayor Pinzerga. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Informational items by members of the City Commission. Commissioner Katz, would you like to begin?
I spoke on the phone with John Markey from JKM, and that is all.
Alright. Commissioner Hay?
No disclosures, but I did have the opportunity of having a wonderful breakfast this morning with the staff. And that was a beautiful thing. It's a beautiful place, beautiful building, the surroundings, the amenities were just great. It almost makes me want to come out of retirement. Well, I don't think so, but it was really nice, really nice. I had a great time. That's it.
Alright, thank you. Commissioner Romulus?
No disclosures, Mayor. Just want to commend our recreation staff, our parks and recreation staff for partnering up with our Lockerhead Marine Center, and they did some, a great program for some of the young students and young kids that were there, and I thought that that went very well, and we made the best with what we have in this very weird and strange time. So just want to thank staff in that department for helping still give a good experience to some of the kids that are, that got to experience that.
Alright, thank you. And Vice Mayor Pinzerga?
I have nothing to disclose at this time.
Alright. For myself, on July 24th, I attended the Business Development Bureau's Town Hall. I spoke with, asked a question to Dr. Fanoi, the Palm Beach County School Districts, of how we as a municipality can work with the school district to help the children as they are not going onto the school property. From that conversations and our discussions that we have had in the past, the Central Palm Beach Chamber has reached out, I've reached out to and responded, and the Education Foundation, which is located in Boynton Beach, will be hopefully working with them, having a meeting, and with the Assistant City Manager Catherine Mattos, so that we can make sure that all of our residents have the supplies and and other things needed for this upcoming school year. On July 25th, I attended the Boynton Strong event. On the 27th, I attended the South Central Regional Wastewater Treatment Board. On the 28th, I had the town square meeting with the executive team of the city, and I attended the National League of Cities Early Childhood Municipal Policy Seminar. On the 29th, I attended Transportation and Disadvantaged Local Coordinating Board. And then, I believe on August 7th, from 5:00 to 7:00 at Wilson Pool or Denson Pool, Carolyn Sims, there's going to be a backpack grabbing go with Boynton Strong in the city. And so that is it for me, and I had conversations with John Markey and Jeff Johnson from JKM. So seeing no more further informational items, we'll move on to announcements. Our first announcement is to proclaim the month of August 2020 as Water Professionals Month. Phil Donovan, State Public Publicity Chair for the FL Water and Pollution Control Operators Association will accept the proclamation. City of Boynton Beach proclamation, whereas the Florida Water and Pollution Control Operators Association, organized in 1940, is a nonprofit trade organization that promotes the sustainability of Florida's water utility industry through workforce development to protect the health of Florida's citizens and to preserve the state's water resources. And whereas this organization offers water and wastewater treatment plant operator and water distribution operator training courses required for the state of Florida's operator license, eight voluntary certification programs and continuing education programs for operator license renewal. And whereas this organization is recognizing the importance of the Florida statutes and administrative code that regulate the water industry, acts as liaisons between the Florida Department of Environmental Protection and industry personnel. And whereas the Florida Water and Pollution Control Operators Association recognizes all those who have played a significant part in operating and maintaining drinking water, wastewater, and stormwater systems in Florida by celebrating Florida Water Professionals Month, which applauds their constant efforts to protect our health and environment. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, hereby proclaim August 2020 as Florida Water Professionals Month. And do we have Phil? Yep. I see, Phil, are you there?
Yes, yes, it's Phil Donovan, President of the SWCA. I mean, excuse me, the State Publicity Chair. Thank you.
You're welcome. Do you have anything to say?
Yes, Mayor and City Council, thank you for taking the time to speak about the water professionals in this city of Lake Worth throughout the state of Florida. This is important to the water professionals, and we're really pleased that you had to take the time to talk to the water professionals. This is really important to us. This is a time that we really enjoy talking to everybody how important water is, and when we get your proclamation, we're going to deliver it statewide and display it, and we're really pleased that you took the time to write the proclamation and send us the copy. Thank you so much, and we really enjoyed speaking with you today. Thank you.
You're welcome. Alright. Our next announcement is that early voting for the August 18, 2020, primary election will begin on Monday, August 3, 2020, and will continue through Sunday, August 16, 2020. The early voting hours are from 10:00 AM until 7:00 PM daily at the Uzell Hester Community Center located at 1901 North Seacrest Boulevard. A listing of early voting locations throughout Palm Beach County is available at the following website. Move out the last dot. On Friday, August 7th, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, a healthcare district of the Palm Beach County Mobile Bus is coming to the Uzell Hester Center in Boynton Beach to provide free COVID-19 tests for county residents. No appointment is needed. ID and facial coverings are required. If there are questions, please call 561-642-1000. Lori, for August 7th, because it's both an early testing site and an early voting site, are we going to make sure that it is properly secured? And that, that traffic flows?
Yeah, we're, we're going to use a whole, the back part of the parking lot for the mobile unit, not a problem, plenty of parking.
Okay.
We should be fine.
Thank you. Announcement, 3D, due to the Presidential Preference Primary, the August 18th City Commission meeting has been moved to Wednesday, August 19th at 5:30 PM. E, the regular commission meeting on Tuesday, September 1st, 2020 at 5:30 PM, Tuesday, September 8th at 5:30 PM, the first public budget hearing to adopt the proposed budget and to adopt the final fire assessment rate resolution. The regular commission meeting on Tuesday, September 15, 2020 at 5:30, and then Tuesday, September 22nd at 5:30, hearing to adopt the final mileage rate and public budget, final budget. So we're going to have four city meetings in September? That's a, that's a yes?
Yes.
Sorry. Yes, sir, and we're, we're part, well, the, the meeting on the 8th, we're going to partner up with the CRA meeting that evening. So, okay. But yes, effectively four.
Alright, thank you.
Trim schedule did not work in our favor this month and required us to do both of our hearings off our regular schedule.
That's how it happens sometimes.
Yeah.
Yeah. So our next is a public audience. Alan, would you please allow attendees to ask questions and raise their hands? And now, because we're here, we'll have a, our public, would you like to speak in public audience? Please go to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, and you'll have the opportunity to speak to the City Commission and the city staff.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me? My name is Joan Nelson. I've been a resident of the City of Boynton Beach for the last 26 years. My address is 170 Southeast 26th Avenue. I've come here tonight, I've never come to a city commission meeting, but I felt it was time for me to get involved. I cannot come here with the purpose of being the squeaky wheel, but I've noticed so many things in my neighborhood and in some of the other neighborhoods I traveled through. But I wanted to see how I could help to be more of a partner, to understand where my my, what I feel legitimate grievances could be directed. And I have some pretty deep concerns. I received something, and I know that the city wants to keep the property values up. They want, they want Boynton to shine, as do I. I've noticed many things in the city, and some of them, I may just come here to discover that they've already been taken care of, that they're already in the works. So I've noticed that there is the, the roads in our streets are falling apart, they're turning into just gravel that we sweep up constantly. It was about 20 years ago, I would say, that they were paved, but it was not a very good product that they put down. And it's literally peeling off the old road in a complete layer. Um, play devil's advocate, there's been a lot of inconsistency in the garbage pickup, but it may be because people are out sick or other reasons. Who knows? That's possible, but we've noticed a lot more of that lately, especially since the COVID, but I think there may be some. There are people who consistently go through our trash cans and dump the contents of them at the end of our driveways or wherever. So these are, these are kind of concerns that I have. I also see that there's a lot of city trucks, workers, cars going up and down my streets constantly, and they don't seem to, and I don't know, of course, their capacity. But during this COVID thing, I paid a lot more attention because I was home. I was stuck home, and I apologized for the appearance of my own property only because I haven't even gotten any unemployment. I'm back to work, but that's good for us soon. We have noticed that there are several neighbors that have run commercial operations of business in their yards. And that's kind of a concern to me. One is, one is obviously a mechanic. He can see the dirty, I truck pulling up and dropping off trucks, and they move the fence, they put the fence back, so nobody notices that. I've noticed I had another neighbor who rented out the garage, who has no bathroom facilities, and people were using the outside of the house as a latrine. That's pretty disturbing. There's a lot of, I also have another neighbor who, unfortunately, nobody, the other people couldn't join me tonight. We were trying to be in here and force, they're still stuck for it. But there seems to be just a general lack of respect for anybody else, since there's always been parties there, but as COVID has started, this has been a radical, annoying problem. We did call the police, and unfortunately, the police didn't even want to put tickets for people parked at the stop signs, fire hydrants, this, that. We've had to witness people packing out bushes on other people's properties, 70, 80 cars down the streets, it's driving all over. And it seemed, and, you know, I understand you can't tow any trucks, that's not realistic. But the fact that we can't seem to enjoy any civility and respect from our neighbors, some of our neighbors, and seem to have no recourse for it because, oh, we can't do this till this time of day, and we're not, you know, I could ticket them, but I'm not going to do it. And I'm like, oh my gosh, why did I bother? I don't want to feel as a citizen, why did I bother? And I'm not saying that just to break, I don't care if somebody has to. That's not what I'm saying. There's trash, there's garbage, I've taken pictures of it. All the other neighbors, just like, well, what are you going to get done? I don't know, what I'm going to ask. All I'm going to say is I'm going to ask, what can I do? What can be done? You know, it's starting to look really, really bad, and I don't feel it's my job to pick up their yard, but it seems that we can't enjoy some sort of peaceful existence in our neighborhoods because of one bad hour. And I feel pretty much in a loss. Like, I guess we just deal with it. So, can you all help me here?
Okay, first off, thank you for coming here and letting us know sort of the issues. You know, that, that expression of squeaky wheel that gets the oil, so. Correct, if we don't know something's wrong, it's going to be very hard for us to fix it. So that's what, first off, let me appreciate you for selling things that are not 100%. We are moving forward with our community standards department. Their number is 561-742-6120.
I know that.
And so that is the, the aspect of, that's the, the phone number to call when something goes wrong, or, you know, if a business is not wearing the masks as required. That, you know, that is where, we are not calling the police on everybody. But we, we do have community standards, and that's the reason why we called it that.
When, under the circumstances, I know that you can't, it's my understanding that there is no law with COVID around at this time that says, you, you, we are asked to socially. If it's a small family that gets together or a certain amount of people, but there's no actual law that can be enforced when there's parties of 75 people or more. Not respecting this.
The, yes.
I understand it. Your hands are tied.
The, the aspect of, like you said, is that we are going through our parking ordinances tonight, where we are trying to add metered parking into the areas, and we're changing the parking ordinances. And so that's maybe a conversation that we have as the City Commission. How do we enforce parking standards in our neighborhood? You know, the, one of the main things we've done recently is saying that if you have a unregistered or vehicle, it cannot be parked on your grass. However, it's very hard for us to, to know that, and so it's, it's something that we have to look through in our city to, and our city ordinance is to say, there's things that can be changed so that we do not have issues of people blocking streets, and that if they do, there are mechanisms to find them or tow their vehicles. So, so that's where we, we, as the City Commission, can have that conversation to, to move forward with that parking issue. And it's, it's something that, it's kind of like, you know, this is the first time, so we don't know how many times it has happened in the past. So that is something that you are going to have to do and let us know of every single time, the date, and either send us an email or what have you, but it's, it's kind of, unless there's a record of the violations or the nuisances, we don't, we're not able to do much.
Another thing I do have a question about, hopefully somebody can clear up here. One of the dicey areas is we have swells. We don't actually have an underwater, I mean, underground sort of type of system for drainage. I live on the corner of line, and I am responsible for that entire swell. Or that entire swell is, belongs to the city. And so when people park all over it with their, sometimes very large trucks or this or that, or they tear them out, they're affecting my springboards or my yard, but it's my responsibility. You know, that's, that's a little kind of shitty area.
So the. So the law allows you to put those stone blocks? Yes, that is kind of the way that we've had put it so that if you don't want part, people parking there, you have that right to do that. Okay. Alright, well, thank you very much.
Mayor Grant, I do see that two individuals have raised their hand, and there was a question or a comment posed in the questions section. Susan Lawyer and Ralph Lewis have raised their hands, and then someone, okay.
So let's begin with Ms. Lawyer, with her hand raised. Or.
Okay, Susan Lawyer, 140 South East 27th Way, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Yay. So I want to say thank you to Andrew Mack. I contacted him, you know, kind of a random silly thing, and he was all over it, and I've got to say thank you so much because he really impressed me with his ability to quickly solve a minor little problem this week, and, and he deserves a shout out. I would like to say thank you to Adam Temple, kind of going similarly with what the last lady was speaking about. We have a big problem with trees being overgrown and growing into the power lines and, you know, people's power being knocked out in my neighborhood because they're not following the tree rules, and Adam graciously has been taking care of this and solving the problem. My neighbors across the street lost their power for hours because of a nuisance tree, and, you know, Adam's been really great about being all over this, and hopefully we can get some more teeth in the tree ordinances as far as the nuisances go to get this result. And I want to say another shout out to Jamie Woolley over in the planning department because I have asked a bunch of questions as we're renovating our family's property on Ocean Avenue, and she has just been all over this, answering the questions so quickly. So I wanted to say a shout out of appreciation to those three people and ask, as we move forward, especially when they finally bring the tree canopy report to you all, that we look at the ordinances regarding people allowing their trees to grow into the power lines and therefore, you know, knocking out everyone's power, even without hurricanes. So, um, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Our next person was Ralph Lewis. Are you there? Can you speak a little? Now we can.
Okay, you can hear me well now?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. How are you doing today? This is Ralph Lewis, 1054 Gateway Boulevard. And I'm here on the behalf of the Hatt Foundation. I'm pretty sure you're familiar with it. You've helped us out with the turkey drives for the last few years, and I just want to thank you for that. The year before that, we was able to do turkey drive for, to feed 5,000 families. This year, we were, last year, we were able to do 10,000 families, and this year, we're hoping to do some more, especially with this whole COVID thing going on and families losing jobs and different opportunities. So I wanted to present it to you again this year, as we still have plans of expanding that and feeding the Boynton Beach area. I just want to thank you so much. You did, I did receive your donations. We was able to feed a few families with it. With the $200 donation, we was able to feed six families of five that had five people within those families. So I just want to thank you a lot for that, Mayor Steve Grant. And hopefully this year that we can have your aid again. And if anything passes by, like we were to be let up from this pandemic some more, that you would be able to help us out in passing out the turkeys, as you have been able to do the last few years.
Ralph, thank you for that presentation. Yes, I'll be more than willing to help you out again next year. And just send me an email so that I'll, I'll have your information, and then we'll move forward with the, giving you some community support funds.
Alright, thank you so much. And also, as a Health and Fitness Director, All right, thank you so much. And also, as a health and fitness director, I just want to put out there for everyone to be able to just get out there, you know, get some sun, whether it's in any local parks, just some local vitamin D, vitamin C for that we can naturally get for our own bodies. I know as a community, we must try to remain strong. I've been able to remain strong while, you know, still presenting myself out in the community, of course, respecting social distancing at the the entire time. And I hope to see you all very soon. This November is coming up, and November twenty first will be the exact date that we will be doing the turkey drive. So it would just be something a hand and go. And if you could be there, that would mean a lot to me, as you've been there before, and also to the commissioners as well.
Thank you.
All right, I'll be sure to send that email over to you.
Our our next person with their hand raised is Annette Gray. You are currently self muted.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. Hope everyone is staying healthy and safe. Annette Gray, fifteen hundred Gateway Boulevard, Suite two twenty. I just have two updates and quick thank you. The first update is regarding my nonprofit, CBD C Entrepreneurship Institute. And this summer, our young folks, as a result of your economic grant, spent some time working on SWOT analysis, personal pitches. Obviously, we pivoted because of the COVID pandemic, but we added some really great components. I had all of the participants take courses at Ivy League schools. So they were required to go online and sign up for MOOC courses at Harvard and Yale and Stanford, and they were amazingly proud that they were able to do that. Some were free and some had minimal cost of $15 or so. The parents were also extremely blown away that this was something that was available to their young people. So I definitely have a new passion, not just for entrepreneurship, but introducing our community kids to Ivy League programs. No disrespect to any local schools in Florida. But I find that our young people are not dreaming big. A lot of scholarships are available, a lot of free development classes are available. And as you know, even a certificate in leadership on someone's resume can really, really make a difference and be very impactful. So we did that. We also worked on resumes. I have videotapes of some of the personal pitches and life goal plans that I asked them to video for you, so I can send those over at a different time. And we will then continue on the latter part of the program in the fall, where they'll continue to develop the business plan and their business. And this year, internships have been quite challenging, so I am going to ask a few businesses to allow the students to participate as interns virtually. So those are some of the changes that we made to the program. It's going well. I'm very happy. And so are the participants, and so are the parents. So that is from the nonprofit side. And from the personal side, what I like to say pays the mortgage and feed my belly, and you've seen me, seen me eat, so you know that is a feat in itself. I love food. I'm a foodie. I have joined as a permanent consultant, the FAU Small Business Development Center. So I am a SBDC Growth and Capital Access Specialist as of a week ago. I am very excited, and I have already reached out to your economic development team about helping your Boynton Beach businesses get prepared to access some of the CBDG grant dollars that are available. I will be working with businesses throughout Palm Beach and Broward County. But, you know, I know that you have some funds available, and my job is to get businesses qualified to access those funds and use those funds in a effective way, so it doesn't eventually cause more harm than good. So I will continue to work with your amazing team, David and John, to identify businesses and work with businesses. And as always, I thank you for your support. I hear the new city hall is breathtakingly beautiful. And I can't wait to come and see all your faces. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And so we have a question from Yvonne Scovron, and I think you
Mayor, she would like to speak if you could unmute her.
Absolutely. So Yvonne, you're currently self muted.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening. We can hear you.
Yvonne Scovron, three hundred and fifty North Federal Highway, apartment fourteen oh five. Let me start off this evening by congratulating everyone on the opening of City Hall. It looks amazing, and I can't wait to be able to, all of us, to be able to be sitting there together and having these meetings. I have, or I'm actually speaking on behalf of Casa Costa, the association. I am the president. We are coming up with a very big issue in our building regarding how our building was originally site planned back probably in two thousand and eight. We have three hundred and ninety five units. Seventy seven of those are what we call transit units. Those units can be used daily. They are now, they're classified as hotel condo. And for some reason, in the last six months, the entire building is being denied financing because we're called hotel. Even though we do not have maid service, we do not come and change our sheets. We do not have room service. So I'm looking to see how we could work together to change some kind of zoning or at least the other three hundred and eighteen units that are not used on a daily basis. There have, we have a minimum of six months. We can change this because our property values are dropping dramatically. I know this isn't something that overnight we could maybe do, but I wanted to bring it to your attention, at least some of the issues that we're now facing. Probably in two thousand and eight, when the original site plan was looked at and approved, you know, things were different. Boynton Beach wasn't what it was or what it is now and what the future is bringing with the hotels and, you know, the downtown. We're just finding, we're having some issues. We also have issues of the safety issue. Now, we know that anyone who currently owns those units that are rented, we know that we will grandfather those people in. You know, changing over. But we need to see how we can work together and, you know, make some changes. Because it's just, it's not working. And now the fact that we can't get financing, it's hurting everybody in the building.
Yeah, Yvonne, thank you for informing us of this. You know, my first question is, what is the the association documents? And whereas you, as the president, may have to amend those to deep, make sure that they are the ones that the documents do not allow it as a hotel. The zoning for mixed use, I don't think is going to change that aspect. And I don't believe there is anybody who applied for a hotel license. But our building department can get that information to you. And so that's, that's kind of where I don't necessarily know whether it be our building department or our city attorney to help with the situation.
Colin Groff, he, you know, he's, but he can only go so far, and that's why I said I'd like to speak this evening. Yes, our condo docs don't say regarding the one day of those seventy seven transit units. And we are in the process of changing our doc. But as we were speaking with our attorney, he is the one, or they, the firm is the one who said that this is a zoning issue, and therefore we don't have the right to make this change without city approval. We can't just say, okay, we're now no longer going to accept daily rentals. It will be like the rest of our units, six months or whatever we decide. He's saying it's a zoning issue. Or or what you classify, and I'm sorry, I don't quite understand the full terminology of when you say density. Now, those seventy seven units, they have, each of them have their own parking space. They have a full kitchen, washer and dryer, so they are exactly as our other unit, all size.
I don't want to, I, I, like I said before, this is a question for our city attorney or building department. We don't have the answer. I don't have the answer as a, as the mayor. So if you'd like to set up a meeting with the city attorney or the, or have the, your attorney talk to our city attorney to help draw up what is requested of the city. But the rezoning of it is not, I don't believe the answer, but the building department would have the final say on that.
I think this evening, and I just wanted to bring it to your attention more than, no, I wasn't expecting you to give me the answer. I just wanted to bring it to your attention that there is this issue in our building, and we would like to be able to work together to see how we can resolve it. And if that's going to working with the city attorney, then I'm more than happy to go in that direction. So thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And I saw that we have a question as well regarding Southeast twenty third and Federal Highway property. Who is paying for the underground infrastructure that has been going on for months? Boynton Beach, Taco Bell, other? Is Taco Bell still building the the restaurant there? If not, what are the plans? The property continues to be a nice store. Thank you, Bill Lee, President, Tuscany on the intercoastal. The answer from Colin Groff is the utilities paying for the utility work before Taco Bell can start. It was delayed due to a design change. The utility work is almost complete, and the rest of the work should be, proceed shortly. I hope this answers your question. And I believe, do we have anyone else raising their hand or asking a question?
Mayor, this is Alan. I don't see any other raised hands or any further questions.
All right. Thank you. Now we will close public audience and move on to administrative, appoint eligible members of the communities serving vacant positions on the CRA Advisory Board. The, we have one alternate position available for arts commission. We have two regular and one alternate position available for the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals. And Commissioner Katz, we have an applicant for the Education Youth Advisory Board.
I'll nominate Jeremiah Young for that student non-voting position.
Second.
Saying no further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. We have, and then we have two alternate positions available on the Historic Resource Preservation Board and two regular and two alternate positions available on the library board. Next, we're moving on to consent agenda. I'd like for item six G to be pulled.
Mayor, six H.
Thank you. All right. May I have a motion to approve the consent, the other consent agenda?
So move. Second.
Thank you. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Item six G, proposed resolution number R twenty dash zero seven four, approve and authorize the city manager to sign an agreement with the first ranked firm, ABM Building Solutions LLC for Town Square City Facilities Maintenance Services, subject to final approval by the city attorney in accordance with the request for qualifications. I believe we have a presentation.
Yeah, Mayor Colin Groff, Assistant City Manager. We have Chad Armstrong here with the ABM, and he has a short presentation to discuss their hiring and hiring workshops that they're offering to the city. So if Alan can bring up the presentation, that would be great.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm a little confused. Are we on G or are we on F?
We're on F.
Or an F, okay.
Which, what, six G?
No, it's F.
It's F, okay.
You said G.
I have G.
I have F.
Yep, there's two different agendas.
It's, it's the item with ABM, so.
So yes, so they they fixed the agendas for tonight, moving up six B already, two seventy, so.
Okay.
They they changed the agendas, and they didn't repost it. So I download it. So yes.
Down there.
Thank you for that, Vice Mayor. So it is under the current agenda. Six F. All right, Chad. Are you ready for the presentation?
I am. Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate everyone's time, and we at ABM and myself personally are very proud to serve the city of Boynton Beach. It's, it's an honor to be part of the beautiful new town square. And we have been working very closely with your staff and Lori's staff, Colin and Andrew, in preparing a local job fair to help leverage the community talent with some of the ABM offerings and opportunities that we have directly related to the town square. In addition to ABM being a global provider and facility solution. So I'm, I I share some excitement to, to begin preparing that with your staff and getting some constituent facing options and local job fair as well as the community facing assistance. So with that, and I thank whoever is the audio visual talent driving, I can go ahead and go to the next slide, please. In preparing a short, short, short presentation, be sensitive to everybody's time and the community, we prepared four major groups that we will be seeking to reach out for talent within the community to help support and maintain and operate the new Boynton Beach City, the town square. The lawn and grass care, under landscaping, soft and hardscapes, a form and position. I won't read through all of them, but as we prepare with your staff, we have opportunities in landscaping, janitorial, the HVAC and technical solution, and some of the electrical systems of the building. So we're excited to put that in front of the community. Next slide, please. We are very, very dedicated to the opportunities that ABM provides, and as a result, we start to begin by trying to find the best in class candidates. We try to align talent and passion with the jobs and the technical expertise. And the net result is the safe fulfillment of the customer's voice. We pride ourselves at ABM to try to be an advocate of the customer and above all else, keep our team and my team specifically safe. So it's an exciting time to be joining forces with your staff and putting this in front of the community. Next slide, please. We are very, very committed to diversity and inclusion. That's not a mantra. It's in action. I specifically like to speak through action as opposed to words. And I'm excited to show that in this outreach, and it significantly is an outreach to the community. So it's a proactive outreach to, to identify people's passions and talents. And I know some of the slides, you know, I'm saying some of the same words, so I appreciate that. And so we can go to the next slide. We employ one of the highest number of military veterans as far as a global company for the US military. It's a passion of ours. I specifically, my operations manager is an ex Navy SEAL. He's a dot the I, cross the T kind of guy, and he's a great guy to have on our team specifically, but I'm proud to But I'm proud to say that, and I have a smile on my face, even though it's COVID, and you guys can't see me. So, next slide, please. Uh, learning and development, uh, we are very, very committed. Uh, specifically, in each of our annual plans, we have an allocation and we budget for the internal development. And in this case, it would be the development of our community. So, this joint, uh, service to provide to Boynton Beach in maintaining and operating, uh, the beautiful new town square, as well as some of the other grounds, hardscapes and softscapes. Uh, we are committed to reinvesting in the community and the personal growth of our team members. We do believe and we support in promoting and growing within. Uh, there's a lot of trust within our teams, and it's treated like a family. Next slide, please. Safety training. Uh, I guess I should have started this with safety. Uh, I'll get slapped by ABM, and that's a joke. Uh, safety, safety is of the utmost importance. Uh, if I had anybody on my team, I have a mantra. I live by these words, "Safety Customer Team." I require to deliver my guys and girls back to their families, their husbands, wives, daughters, sons, in at least as good condition as they come to work. I mean that. Customer. We serve customers, that's all we do. We are experts at it, and I pride myself. I go to bed at night and wake up in the morning to serve a customer. And my team, we treat them like family. Uh, I'm excited to expose, uh, some opportunities and introduce that to the community. So, I, I, I do say safety as of the utmost importance. And your site lead, Scott Jacobs, uh, suffered a small injury. Uh, and we have been able to, uh, reallocate and leverage and provide, uh, an, an excellent opportunity for him to start to leverage his skillset as a twenty-seven-year union employee and master HVAC technician during the time that we're starting to gain traction with your staff uh, in the turnover from your design bill contractor. So, I'm very excited, and we do leverage safety. It is of the utmost importance in everything that we do. You'll see our guys have gloves, glasses, and they are masked up. So, we appreciate the opportunity, and safety is of the utmost concern. So, I did take a little longer on that slide, but it's worth it. Next slide, please. Management training, this goes alongside with what I had said about reinvesting in people. Uh, we are a very, very connected group, and so we do have nice opportunities. I, I really, truly believe this for vertical mobility within the company, as well as leveraging people's experience and training them so that they can improve business acumen, communication skills, and, and really identify and grow areas that they're excellent at, so they can invest the majority of their time in the areas they're great at and see success through that, and augment or support them where they're challenged. Next slide, please. So, in summary, uh, again, I cannot resonate loud enough and be more thankful to be part of this. I know it's an amazing time, it's a crazy year. And I would like to personally say thank you for the opportunity to help you all operate and maintain that beautiful gem of a town square. I'm excited. I've been there every morning since Monday at seven AM. I like it. I'm cleaning sidewalks, uh, we're working alongside the guys, and we are excited to continue to work with your community and with your staff and Lori's staff to create an outward-facing job workshop, as well as, I know I sound like I drink the Kool-Aid, but ABM's a pretty cool place, and we're excited to expose the, the talent of Boynton Beach to the global opportunities that ABM has. Without stealing anybody, Mayor, from your city, I don't want to act like I'm, I'm poaching, you know? So, it's appreciated, and I, I know you guys can't see me, but I'm nodding and thanking, so thank you very much.
All right. Thank you so much, Chad, and, uh, I really appreciate, uh, you having this presentation for us. Um, you know, this is, uh, that aspect of equity that, you know, we, as in the city, we, you know, this was not necessarily part of the RFQ to have this presentation. Um, but I feel like it's very important, and I'm glad to see that you will be providing an in-person workshop. Um, now, hopefully, within the city of Boynton Beach. Uh, we do have plenty of facilities that we could partner with you, uh, to use. And, uh, that's, that's kind of where I'm at, is that I saw your website. Um, you know, like you said, you are a worldwide company, and that someone who might be cleaning sidewalks could someday run the company with the, you know, with a career path. So, uh, I'm looking forward to, uh, working with you, and that's, that's my comments. Does anyone else from the City Commission have any comments? Hearing none?
I'd just like to ask about the number of positions that this would potentially open. Do we have that number?
We, we are in the process of working with your staff to clarify and finalize some of the specific scope and statement of work. So, as that solidifies, we would then be able to identify the specific number in each of the talent pools.
Got it. Well, thank you for your, for your time and your presentation.
Absolutely, and I would also like to say I did eye a couple of beautiful spots to hold the local City Hall Job Facing Fair. There's some really great, uh, community spaces that Andrew and Colin walked me by. So, I, I, I'd like to say I did have my eye on a couple, they look beautiful.
Excellent.
Mayor.
Yes, Commissioner Romulus.
I just wanted to chime in and, and also, um, thank, uh, ABM for the presentation and, and sharing with us their vision for what they'll be doing, and also just really being focused on, um, inclusivity and diversity, and also really being focused on local efforts of hiring local and making sure that we're, we're giving back to our community with, um, all the new things that, uh, we're doing here in Town Square. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. Seeing no more comments, may I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. And so, Ty, I wanted to double-check, is it resolution number twenty dash zero seven six that you'd like to pull, or seven five?
That's right, Mayor, regarding the Coronavirus Relief Fund.
Okay. So, proposed resolution number R twenty dash zero seven six. Approve and authorize the mayor to sign a Coronavirus Relief Funds Subrecipient Funding Agreement between the City of Boynton Beach, a local government that meets the State Housing Initiatives Partnership Program eligibility requirements, and the Florida Housing Finance Corporation, a public body, corporate and politic, politic duly created and existing under the laws of the state of Florida to govern the expenditure of the CRF funds as indicated in the company agreement and subsequently dispersed CRF funds by Florida Housing.
So, Mayor, the reason I asked to pull this item is that I'd like to ask if somebody from staff could just talk to the public about what this is and what it means and what it can be used for. Uh, housing is obviously a, a very big problem as it relates to evictions and the moratorium getting delayed. Um, you know, but there's still a lot of uncertainty, and I do receive emails, particularly from seniors, about, uh, them being worried, you know, how are they gonna make it next month? Um, and there is a lot of housing concern, and I think this is very good news. But I want to make sure that the public is aware, uh, of what exactly this is and, and, um, what it can be used for.
We have Mike, uh, either Colin or Mike, Mike Rumpf, I don't, I, I see him on here, but he's muted. Alan, you may need to unmute him.
Right now, he's self-muted.
No, Colin. But I do know we, um, we were allocated, I believe, and I'm going off memory, two-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand dollars in CARES Act funding that will allow us to augment our existing programs to, to go toward affordable housing. I think rent assistance, mortgage assistance for those that have been, have to have been affected by COVID, job loss, getting behind in their, their payments. So, I know staff's working right now, and Mike, uh, Mike's on, so let me be quiet and let him give you a little bit better detail.
No, you're doing okay, Lori. Uh, Mike Rumpf, Development Director, or Development Services Director. And I have LaShay Brooks, interim, um, Community Improvement Manager, is also available for specific questions and maybe greater detail than what I can provide you. We went through the same process not too long ago when we got the first series of CARES Act funds. Um, we had to create the criteria for allocations, is what we started talking about. Um, in this case, it is directed to us, but we're called the subrecipients. And there's an agreement between us, uh, through SHIP, for the state's program for distribution of those funds. Um, I would like to turn it over to her for specifics, because I know, and, and of course, we're gearing up to give you a more detailed overview of our housing programs, which is essentially fueled by state funds through the SHIP program, or federal funds through the CDBG grant program. Um, we'll give you a presentation at your next meeting, a little more detail. Um, and this is a good, um, good start to that, one example. In addition to the regular funds that we get through the CDBG program from HUD, this is, of course, in connection with this period that we're going through. Um, and it is specifically intended to help people survive this period, whether it is, um, to prevent foreclosures, to prevent evictions, to help fund some of those interim periods. Now, there are some categories that can then be used for businesses and economic development measures, similar to the prior lending group that we were allocated. Um, those are specifically laid out to us. It doesn't leave too much room for interpretation, um, as HUD passes down so specific rules. Um, if LaShay is on, or can be, or maybe I should just leave it to more specific questions, and, and either she or I can, can answer them.
I am on.
Thanks, LaShay. Vice Mayor, if you have more specific, more detailed questions, or what you don't think the public has heard yet.
Thank you.
There are income restrictions that go along with it, um, and I'll stop.
So, uh, first of all, thank you, um, Mr. Rumpf, and thank you, LaShay. I want to thank you personally, because I know that, uh, you were instrumental in helping some of my constituents. I really appreciate that. Uh, LaShay, or to Mike, so actually, Mike, you brought up my very first question, and that is that income requirement. I think it said something like one hundred twenty percent of the AMI. So, could you tell us what that means exactly, and, and what is the AMI? So, what kind of number are we talking about?
If you like, I can answer that question for you.
Thank you, LaShay.
Okay. Good afternoon, LaShay Brooks, Community Improvement Division. Uh, what the, um, one hundred and twenty percent of median income? The median income of Palm Beach County roughly is seventy-nine thousand, one hundred. So, specifically, when we post the ad, we will list the maximum incomes for household categories, one through possibly eight. So, that means for one person in a household, if their income does not exceed seventy-three thousand, eight hundred dollars, we can assist them. Um, there's several categories, but basically, currently, we do have several applications that we are looking at. The word is out, we are receiving calls daily, and we are working actively with mortgage assistance and some rental assistance. But this program specifically, there will be seven programs that we're gonna operate. Uh, the rental assistance, of course, the mortgage assistance, of course, but also emergency housing. So, if we have someone who had a loss of income, and they have an AC breakdown or something, we will be able to go in and assist them with the emergency, uh, repairs. Um, also, we will assist with, um, homeowners with insurance payment. If they don't have a, a mortgage, and they're getting behind on their, um, insurance, we can do that. We can pay their deductibles. We're gonna do, um, the housing reentry assistance, and that will be, um, applicants who actually are evicted or foreclosed upon. Um, we can assist them with, um, security deposit, utility deposit, and even for mortgage storage. Um, we will have a foreclosure or eviction prevention. Um, and this is including, um, monthly rent and association fees. So, if we have someone that can pay their mortgage, but they can't pay the association fee, we can step in and assist with that. And then the final category, a final program, would be homeownership counseling. Well, what we will do is any applicant or household that we assist with mortgage assistance, we will refer them over to take a foreclosure prevention class. Um, no charge, then we will pay for it, but it will be a couple of hours that they can do online class to assist them through the foreclosure process.
Uh, thank you for that, LaShay. I just have a few more questions, and you touched on it here and there. Um, so, a lot of people that are on the edge of being evicted, um, you know, you know that one that, how that saying goes, when it rains, it pours, and when they're behind on a payment, it becomes two payments, and three payments, and four payments. And people have to make really tough decisions, uh, whether or not they buy food, or they buy medicine, or, or pay that rent. Can this be, can this money be used to pay back, or connect, or save back rent? I think that's what it's called. Can it, can it be used to do that?
Well, our program is designed to pay rent in advance. So, if we have someone that comes and they're two months behind, and what we will do is pay maybe two more months, so that it gives them the opportunity to catch up with other, um, of their.
Got it.
So, we will pay in advance.
And if somebody received already, you know, uh, relief funds from some other source, would that take away, would that make that person ineligible to receive these funds?
Only if they receive funds for rental mortgage assistance, or what they're requesting from us. So, we, um, HUD is very specific, and Florida Housing is very specific about duplication of services. So, if someone went to the county and the county assisted them with their mortgage payment, they can't come to us, uh, for assistance. However, we may be able to assist them with something else, their insurance, or, um, some other services that we offer.
Understood, and my last question is, because I know there's a big need for this, is timeline. When do you think we can start, uh, this program, or programs?
Yes, I have four files on my desk currently that I'm processing. So, as soon as we receive the subrecipient agreement is signed and sent back to Florida Housing, we can start administering the funds. We should, they will automatically send us funds.
Well, thank you so much, and for everybody, um, in your department who's working on this, so I appreciate this. I think we all appreciate this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Romulus?
Thank you. Um, I just want to have, uh, LaShay just repeat again whatever phone number or email is, is needed for residents to call in order to get this assistance.
Yes, um, the phone number would be, um, five-six-one, seven-four-two, six-zero-six-six. That's my direct line. The email address is brooksL@BBFL.us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And so, can we have that motion?
Uh, yes, motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. And so, I see that the, the agenda that is printed online is different than the downloadable version of the agenda. And so, the, the six B that was on Friday's agenda is now already moved to seven E. So, um, Jim, Sheriff, do we need to undo that motion to amend? Uh, the agenda?
Yes, you do.
All right.
I resend my motion?
Well, you'd have to, I'd say motion to approve the agenda as stated.
Okay, motion to, amendment, or the agenda as stated.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. So, uh, Colin? You tried to fix your mistake, but you didn't let us know, so, um.
So, Mayor, okay.
So, if you change the agenda on the day of the agenda, you have to let us know.
Thank you, Mayor, because I didn't either. But, yes.
I will take the pain, but.
Too much of real time.
All right. So, moving on to items, uh, to item seven, consent bids and purchases over a hundred thousand. Uh, would any of the commission like to pull any of the items?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Hearing none, motion. Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 8A, proposed ordinance number 20 dash 028. Jim?
An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, abending Part II of the City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 14 Motor Vehicles and Traffic, creating a new Section 1414 Parking Meters to add definition standards and fees to regulate parking meters in the city, deleting Chapter 16, Article 2, Division 1, Section 1661, deleting Chapter 16, Article 2, Division 3, and Section 1682 to remove redundant language, providing for conflict severability codification and an effective date.
All right. Thank you. Alan, I'm going to ask you to allow people to raise their hand or ask questions for this public hearing aspect.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Alan. I have enabled both of those features so that the public can ask questions or raise their hand through the GoToWebinar.
All right. Thank you. Uh, I was reviewing the, this ordinance, and I'd like to be able to offer a annual pass for the boat ramp. As we've had in the past, it's currently not, uh, not stated in the ordinance. I spoke with Colin in regards to this, and the number that I felt, uh, you know, is pretty reasonable, was $350 for the annual pass for the boat ramp. If we're charging $25 a day for the weekend, or $10 a day max during the day, it's not something, uh, out of the range of normal, similar to what we do for our residents and non-residents, um, for our oceanfront park. But we do have commercial fishermen, we do have people that like to go boating a lot, and I like to give them that option, whether to get an annual pass or to do a daily. And so, I don't, Jim, would the ordinance need to be changed to allow for, uh, an annual pass at the boat ramp?
Uh, we can work that into the fee schedule.
Mayor, did you say just for residents?
No, because I spoke with Colin in regards to this, and because the county has helped fund, uh, the improvements at Boat Ramp, we cannot limit it to, uh, different rates between the city residents and county residents.
Mayor, are we competitive with other cities, uh, with the 350? Are we, are we in line? We are, but do you know of any other cities that are, have an annual fee that's in that range?
I, I don't have that answer of other cities. I just based it upon the, the numbers, where before it was free during the week, and it was $10 on the weekend with a $50 annual pass. Because we are jumping up with the, the boats, I feel that we could do it at $350 for one year, and then make adjustments as needed the following year to see if anybody does take the annual pass option, or if it's only daily options.
Okay. Thank you.
Can, can staff weigh in on how that might alter their projected revenue, you know, relative to, to operating?
Uh, yeah, this is, this is Colin Groff, Assistant City Manager. This really is a discussion where we're talking about the rate ordinance itself, the fee ordinance, I mean, the fee resolution, which is, you're going to get to next. The fees are not listed in the ordinance itself, they're listed in the rate resolution. But, um, we have, we have not looked at that yet, because we don't, because of the way the Boat Ramp works now, I, that's going to be a very difficult one to calculate, uh, because we don't have exact counts of, of, uh, you know, how many people would, because it would be a very, it would be the first time we would do a pass for this. So, we don't really know how many people that would take advantage of it. Um, so it's a very difficult answer right now. I, I guess that's my point.
So, Colin, nobody applies for the, the annual pass for the Boat Ramp?
So, Andrew, are you on? I think Andrew is on. Um, oh, there he is. Go ahead, Andrew.
Absolutely. Um, I don't have the information in front of me, the exact number. So, we do have a, the, uh, a boat pass, annual boat pass for, um, Boyer Park. I don't have the exact numbers or breakdown, um, to give you a projection. I know that's not a ton that we have, um, so I don't know that it's going to change the revenue up or down in a significant way.
So, that's, that's kind of where I'm at, is that if you're a commercial fisherman, uh, and you're looking at, you know, if you try to fish seven days a week, you're looking at $100 a week. Whereas, before, you could have just paid 50 bucks and you would have been good for the year. So, that's kind of where, I don't feel like this is for the, the recreational boater, but if someone's going, uh, to use our Boat Ramp on a basis, I don't want to discourage people from going there the first year that we change the rates. So, that way, we can get a better understanding of how we should move forward with the Boat Ramp next year, by offering an annual pass for people that know that they're going to go, um, you know, 35 times during the week, or 14 times during the weekend, or any combination thereof.
Mayor?
Yes.
I support your idea of an annual pass. Um, I think it's a good thing for people who do frequently use it, as you described. But I would like to ask staff if they could give us some information, if, you know, it sounded like there is information, they just haven't, um, pulled it together yet, uh, that will give us some sense of, you know, what exactly is happening, and also comparison with other Boat Ramps. That would just give us a ballpark.
So, Jim, do we need a, a motion to amend to allow, uh, annual pass at the Boat Ramp?
You, you could do that when you get to the resolution that establishes the fee. That's where the, that change would come.
Okay, because the way I read the ordinance.
You don't eat it in the ordinance.
Well, the way that I read the ordinance is that before, we had it in our code of the annual pass for the Boat Ramp. And it does not specifically say.
We've tried to facilitate the ability of, of the commission to change the fees from time to time by shifting the fee schedules into a resolution form, rather than fixing them in the ordinance. That's why, that's why you won't find it in the new version of the ordinance.
Okay. See, but if we do put in the ordinance, we would have to have an annual pass, correct?
You would. That's true.
Mayor, I think what Jim's saying is that it said, you, you have an item there for parking permit, so it'd just simply be a parking permit. The fee schedule dictates the location and the fee amount. So, I think, I think it'll be fine if we just leave it, uh, we don't have to specifically name it in the ordinance, as long as we amend the fee schedule to add it, uh, we can, you can add it on, uh, on your adoption, and then we'll, we'll make the adjustment before we publish the fee schedule.
Okay. All right, so may I have that motion?
I'll move.
I will second.
All right. And we have Ms. Sawyer, I believe, as, uh, would like to speak.
Hi, 140 Southeast 27th Way. Um, I just typed the question, just to clarify, is this just for boaters? Or is this for everyone who wants to go visit the park in, in a car, you know, families outings? Or is it just a fee for boaters?
So, the, the, the parking meters will be installed at Boyer Park, and that'll be for every space that's there. So, that'd be cars and for boat launching.
So, if somebody wants to use it to launch a kayak, or to, to rent a kayak, they would still have to pay for the, that metered spot?
Correct. Or if they wanted to go out on the pier, or something like that, yes, they would need to pay to, to park their vehicle at work.
Okay, so families that are going to play in the park, or picnic, or whatever, everyone's going to have to pay, it's not just boaters?
Correct.
Okay, then, then I'm going to object to this, because it's a park, and my tax is already paid for the park, and I think it's fine to pay for the, the boaters, because they're actually using the facilities in a way that could, you know, the ramps and everything, they're taking up significant space with their cars, SUVs, whatever they're driving, and, and their, you know, the, the trailers for the boats. But if a family wants to just go hang out and picnic out at the pavilion, or look at the art on the pavilion, um, then I think this is wrong that there's a fee for that. It's not like the park is really overwhelmed, except for, you know, Chili Cook Off Day, or, you know, the Kiwanis Boating Fishing Tournament. But in general, it's usually pretty open, and families can be allowed to go out and, and see the art, and play soccer, and go look at the manatees, and, you know, see the purple fish, and, and all the cool marine life we have there. That just seems like a detriment to the residents who are, have already paid for that park. Whereas, if you're using it commercially with a boater, then yes, I have no issue with there being a fee for that. So, maybe my suggestion is, is break this apart, and thank you for your consideration.
And I guess, uh, there's other question I forgot to ask. Would we also be charging, uh, the Coast Guard auxiliary to park there, so that they could attend their beatings?
I think they should be exempted personally.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I, I don't think they'll, we'll, we'll work with them on some type of permit that they would have exempt.
Uh, Mayor?
Yeah, they utilize the building, and I believe they're there frequently, so that wouldn't, and they provide a, a nice free service to our, our city. I think that would be a reasonable thing to do.
Yes. Ms. Rahab?
Most, most of the parking spaces there are long for the, for the vehicle and, and the, uh, and the boat. How many regular carp's parking spaces do we have there? Does anybody know? There's just a few, a sand, a handful, I believe.
I got someone saying there's 10.
10. And, and the rest of them are, are for boat. Um, I, I, I think, uh, Susan, uh, Orey has a pretty valid point. Um, I, I just, because I go out there myself sometimes, just take my grandsons, uh, play on the, uh, on the playground, and, and, well, I, it just seems, seems, uh, a little unfair to charge family just to play on the playground a little bit, the same thing we are going to charge the, the boaters, uh, of the commercial or whatever. It, it just struck me that way once, uh, she was talking. So, I, I would, I would have to support, uh, the idea that she brought up, that, uh, we take a look at that.
So, so that would be, I'd be last on the fee structure. So, that'd be the, the other item under legal, to discuss, you know, what exactly do we want to charge, you know, do we want to charge people for trailers a certain rate versus vehicles a certain rate?
Yes.
Maybe remember, just, just real quick, you know, at, at Boyer Park, it's, it's an hourly rate there. It's not, there is not a flat fee rate that we're charging there, so it's, it's an hourly rate that, that people will be paying.
Correct.
Okay.
The, the aspect of it is, is that, you know, are we encouraging people to park at Intracoastal to walk over? And, uh, that's, that's, uh, I guess, a conversation we can have at, uh, for legal for that item. And then, um, yes.
Um, Andrew just said something. Andrew, currently, it's an hourly rate. How much is that? Could you just remind me?
The, the, the proposed, we're proposing an hourly rate, it's proposed a dollar 50 an hour. Currently, we, we charge a flat rate on the weekend.
Flat rate, okay, currently.
And I do see that we have someone else with their hand raised, Ms. Ramona Young. Would you, uh, do you have a question?
Ramona Young, 101 South Federal. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
101 South Federal Highway. I just want to add my two cents to Ms. Sawyer and to Min, uh, Mr. Hay on the fees. I think it's a little bit much. Thank you.
So, that's, uh, a discussion we can have on, uh, item 12A, but this is regarding changing of the ordinance, allowing for parking meters. We have a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion from the, the commission? Before I take a roll call. Hearing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hay?
Aye.
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Conserga?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, um, yes.
This is Magnum.
Thank you. Jim, proposed ordinance 20 dash 029.
029, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, approving the abandonment of a portion of a 10-foot wide utility easement located at 2735 Southwest 23rd Cranbrook Drive, Cranbrook Lake Estates, PUD, authorizing the city manager to execute a disclaimer, which shall be recorded with this ordinance in the public records of Palm Beach County, Florida, and providing an effective date.
All right. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Saying none, may I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Conserga?
Yes.
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Aye.
Vote is 5-0.
Our next item is 9A, the city manager reports discussion and direction by city commission regarding the reinstallation of the mural at fire station number one.
Thank you, Mayor. Catherine has, Catherine Matos, our Assistant City Manager, has, uh, just wanted to provide a brief update to you on, uh, the consents that we sent out on the mural, and what we received back, and what we plan to do to move forward. So, go ahead, Catherine.
Hi, this is Catherine Matos, Assistant City Manager. Um, just to give a brief update and background, in June, at the Art Board meeting, there was a discussion about what to do with the mural, and at that time, the Art Board voted to put the mural back up as it was originally approved, before the changes were made. Um, and at that time, it was also decided that the prudent thing to do would be to get written consent from the people depicted in the mural. So, we sent out letters, we sent out about 30 letters for the people that we could identify. And as of today, I've received 13 responses. Uh, 12 of them are positive, saying, go ahead, there's one saying they want to be removed from the mural. Um, and the goal here is obviously to do right by the community, right by the Art Board, right by the artist, and we wanted to have a discussion with you all on how to move forward. It's our recommendation, um, to move forward with reinstalling the mural as it was originally designed. However, we would want to have somebody professionally, hire probably an outside professional to remove, um, the one person who's requesting not to be in it. So, that, if you want to discuss.
So, we, how many, uh, no replies did we receive, have?
Just one, but I have about, uh, 20 or so people that did not respond at all.
Yeah, that, that's what I was asking, the 20 or so, no, not responding. Um, you know, the, the question is, is that, you know, are we using their likeness without their permission?
And Jim, I'm going to ask Jim to weigh in on this one, too, Mayor.
Right. That.
Right, that, that was the purpose of, um, sending out the request for consent was to make certain that we didn't violate uh, anybody's, uh, privacy issue with respect to the use of their likeness in this, in this mural. Um, whether there's risk associated in now continuing with the mural as designed with identifiable people in it. Uh, with that, for the commission to determine, but I would say that from a legal point of view, the risk is probably much lower. Very low at this particular point, since we have asked for consents and people have chosen not to even respond to the communication.
Mayor?
So, yes.
I have a question for Catherine. Uh, when you sent this letter out to the, I think you said about thirty people, A, did they all get a copy of the artwork? So everybody's on the same page as to what is or what is not shown? And B, was a deadline given? Because I don't want us to go and start this process. And then five days from now, they then say, hey, I don't want to be on this. And then we're already, you know, one step away from putting it up on the window. So were those two things provided?
So, yes, we did provide a picture of how it was originally approved. And no, there was no deadline, but I did provide return envelopes that were already stamped with, uh, the address on them. So literally all you had to do was sign the form, put it in the envelope and put it in the mail.
Okay, so what do we, I hope this, I hope this doesn't happen, but what if somebody says, hey, I don't want to be on this anymore? And we are one day before putting this up. Uh, you know, that would just be another problem. What do we do in that case?
Yeah, we wouldn't, I mean.
From what you said, only a third of the people responded. There's still plenty more people that could respond.
So, and, uh, my also thing is that you did not also give them the option to not consent. There was no checkbox or anything like that. So if they didn't want to give consent, we didn't, uh, you know, based upon what the letter says. You know, if you signed the letter, you gave consent. If you didn't sign the letter, are you withholding consent? Is base, is what the letter states. So that's something where I think we need to resend the letter to the twenty or so no response. Stating if you, you don't respond, we will deem it you have consented. And give them the option to not consent. Because as the way I read the letter, if you don't respond, they're not consenting.
Mayor, and I think there should also be an end date to that offer as well.
Exactly.
I think.
That's what I meant by end date.
Uh, we should have it by the second meeting in September. Because, uh, the first meeting is on, uh, September first. So, or, you know, actually, you know, if you want to do it by the end of this month?
No.
You want us?
One of the things, uh, I want us to be careful with, we're in no hurry, uh, to get this mural back up. And, uh, I like all the comments that are being made, but I don't want us to rush into this. I want us to do it right and, and give that opportunity, uh, for the people to digest it and respond properly. So, uh, I, I hear what you're saying, Mayor, but, uh, let's, let's just be fair and give them, uh, proper time to, uh, to consider, uh, their response. Cause I don't want to go through this again.
So thirty days is, uh, proper time?
Yes.
Okay. We'll plan for thirty days from the, the date of the letter it being sent.
Thank you.
So Lori and Catherine, do you have, uh, direction to move forward?
Yes, we'll work with legal to get the letter back out again.
Yeah, and, um, I'd also like to review it before it gets sent out. Just so that.
I do would like to.
Just send it to all of us.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, just send it to all of us.
Sure, okay.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to unfinished business, the continuation of commission review of the Town Square private development status.
Sorry, I was, I'm stuck on mute. Um, we wanted to just bring this back to you. I think, um, I'm gonna ask Colin and, well, and Jim. We, there were a couple of items at the last meeting that, um, I think Mr., that John Markey had requested of the commission. And, um, we wanted to just kind of follow back up with you on what your thoughts were on that. Do you want to provide staff direction on some of his requests or what your thoughts were on that? So we don't leave that idle. There were, I think, three, three items. He, he was requesting that, uh, the city consider being a co-guarantor on some, uh, financing for the two garages that were discussed. I think he would also like the commission and the CRA to consider additional, uh, future TIF revenues to further incentivize, um, his, his portion of the, of the project. And, um, he had made some remarks on some outstanding easements related to parcel two and three. Um, Jim, if you would update the commission on the easements, we've been actually awaiting a response from Mr. Markey for quite some time now to, to get, uh, to get the documents executed. But Jim, if you want to update the commission on that, and then I think those other two items, we'd like to hear what your thoughts are on that. And if you have a direction or, uh, what you would like us to do with any action.
Sure, that's, that's really probably the easier of the three items that Mr. Markey asked us to look at. The form of the, uh, uh, easement, temporary parking easement agreement that was, um, requested by Mr. Markey, this is to protect his interest in the properties that now comprise the two parking lots, newly paved parking lots, the one along Boynton Beach Boulevard, and the one to the, uh, east of the, uh, the, the children's museum. So he requested that we enter into an agreement that contained a number of provisions in exchange for him allowing us to use that property, uh, as temporary parking for City Hall and all the other facilities. Um, his concerns were that it would be insured and that it wouldn't be used for storage of, uh, equipment, uh, other than vehicles and the like. We did reach agreement on the form of that, uh, on the form of the documents, uh, July the third. And we did confirm in writing to Mr. Markey's attorney, uh, that we agreed to the format. Uh, thereafter, he sent, uh, the documents to us. He needed to obtain some, uh, legal descriptions for those easements. And he needed to obtain the consent of, of the lender, uh, that, that has an interest in the property as well. We were informed, I was informed last Friday, that he has the consent of the lender. So therefore the documents are signature ready. Since he is granting the easement to the city, we requested that he provide, uh, his signature to, to those documents first. And my understanding is as of today, that his attorney has advised, uh, my paralegal, that, uh, he's obtaining that signature and will send it. So the only action that's required left on those temporary parking easements is for the commission to authorize the mayor by motion, uh, to sign the agreement, uh, when we get it in final form, signed by Mr. Markey. So that's item number one in that grouping. There are other easements that are currently on the property that constitutes the Town Square project. Uh, they are for both parking and for construction. And in sequence, they will be released as well. We have agreed on the form of the releases. But it's simply the timing of that to make certain that there are still locations where, uh, contractors could, uh, uh, could work on the property. Colin could give you a better idea. Maybe it'd be appropriate to pick, to pull up the map that shows where the parcels are. And Colin could tell you, uh, where construction activity is still underway and people need to have access. But we have in fact agreed upon the form of the releases. And, uh, those will be signed in due course as well.
Oh, and do we have the, uh?
We're having difficulties bringing it up.
All right, I didn't have.
I can describe it though. It's pretty easy to describe if, if.
Yeah, it's, it is, it's the last document in the commission agenda backup on this agenda item. It's an aerial that shows the, the parcel numbers, uh, so that you could see, so see where they are. So.
Yeah, I'm, I'm asking Alan to bring up that agenda item so he can scan to it. And as you can tell, Alan's working on it. Uh, until then, I can start describing it. Uh, again, uh, Jim mentioned several easements. Uh, there, there are, uh, easements for utilities along the property lines that are necessary, uh, to finalize the project. You know, that we need, we need signed by a JKM. And there are also an easement.
Yeah.
Here, this is a great picture. So if you look at parcel one, between parcel one and parcel two, there's an easement that needs to be developed to provide access to both those parcels from First Street, which is the street behind the, the, um, high school and Boynton Beach Boulevard. There's also a right turn lane on Boynton Beach Boulevard into that right away, into that right away. It's between parcel one and parcel two. Um, all parties have agreed to it, but we need to finalize the documentation. So there's four easements there. Two are with the city, so we control those and we can do those. And two are with JKF. So those are the other easements that we're working on. Um, and, and we, we do need those signed, so we can move forward with that part of the work.
All right. So who do I give the, the presentation back to? Alan, all right. And what is his name? Oh, there we go. There we go. Alan, you got the? There we go. See, can you scroll up a little bit? Alan, can you scroll up a little bit so we can see item one and two?
Okay, hold on one second, please. I'm, uh, items one and two on which is, and again, I apologize?
Just, the current screen you're on, can you scroll up so that we can see the top of the page?
So let's.
No, yeah, go back to where you were.
I'm gonna go back to where I was to show the actual agenda here. One second, okay. In the agenda itself, Mayor Grant? Is that correct? Somebody else took over.
Yeah.
It's called.
Click on ten A.
Ten A, okay. There we go.
That's, that's what we wanted.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
All right. So I'd like to, to make my comments on items one and two now. Uh, at the meeting with the city manager, Colin and, uh, Jim, I stated that if the city was going to co-sign anything, that we would have to have the doc, uh, the land given back to us. Because we're not going to be held liable, not own the land. I don't know how the rest of the commission feels, but that's the way that I am, if, uh, we're going to co-guarantee anything. Mayor? Yes, Commissioner Katz and Commissioner Romulus?
Thank you. So, um, I'm, I would like to ask staff what their recommendations would be to protect our interests and, and the residents' tax dollars if, if we're guaranteeing these loans that would finance the projects. If, if staff could explain to me, is there any benefit to continuing, you know, the relationship if, if, if the party who's supposed to build them cannot fulfill their legal obligations under the contract? And if we did see a benefit in some continuity, is it better to bifurcate the garages because they are on completely different plots with what seems like years between them and time schedules? So if we were going to back a loan for a garage, I would not, I would absolutely oppose anything other than the south end at this point. Um, I just, I, I would request staffs, either Lori or, or Collins, maybe from a technical perspective, unvarnished guidance as to what's best for us and the taxpayers. Because I don't know if it's best to continue as is, or, or to admit that the partnership is not producing and take a step back and, and pivot, because maybe that is better for the city. Maybe that's a better deal. Maybe that's safer for the taxpayers. I, I'm requesting guidance.
Mayor, if I may ask, art, for clarification, when you say give the land back, are you talking about only the parcel, the portion of land on which the garage will sit? Or the entirety of the parcel, including the residential development piece?
It'd be all, because if they default, we, we want to have, you know, even though the building's not ours, we would want to make sure that we have collateral.
How would that affect his financing then? What if he doesn't, it's, the, the, the part is the ownership. You know, is, if you don't own it, how do you get financing on it? So he'll, he'll run into the same problem we did when we talked about it and would need, if we were going to fund the, or potentially bond the garages, that we didn't own the land. So obviously our bond counsel is saying, you can't do that. You need to own it. I don't, what, uh, what I may suggest, without having to try to answer on the fly on something, that's a pretty, that's a complicated scenario, I think, is to, and, and Colin and Jim, you're here too, is, is this something that it sounds like basically a restructuring of our existing contract is to perhaps sit down with, sit down with them if that's something you want us to do and let us look at pros and cons and talk about how, what that means to Mr. Markey and to us. Um, because that would effectively, and are you talking just the south side, Mayor, or both sides, north and south?
You know, basically, I, you know, I'm giving you as the, the city manager directions of how I feel. Um, of what the, the first, uh, request was. The, the fact is, is that the, the first request was not in the original contract to begin with. And so therefore it's a renegotiation. And so I would absolutely give you direction to renegotiate. So that this project, uh, can get moving forward.
Mayor?
Yes.
I have to agree. I think there needs to be a re- renegotiation and the city, as well as John Markey, needs to sit together, um, and work that out. Uh, I think that is not something we should be doing here right now. I think we can have that conversation after the two parties have met.
I'll just make it unanimous. Uh, I feel the same way. I don't feel very comfortable with this guy, uh, John Markey. Uh, we definitely need to renegotiate and see just where we are.
Right. But, and then I'd ask, yes, Vice Mayor?
Uh, may I ask, when was the last time that you have met with, uh, John Markey?
Oh, well.
Not necessarily you, but perhaps the city.
I, I think, um, hmm, so when COVID hit, March-ish, probably, I think that, if I'm not mistaken, the early part of the year. I, I don't recall exactly, but, um, obviously not since COVID. We haven't, we've chatted a little bit on email, but not much.
All right.
So I, I guess still, um, okay, Mayor, you were just commenting on number one. Let me, you need to get to number two too. So from a co-guarantor standpoint, which was number one, correct?
Yes.
That, that is for us to consider that we would go back and perhaps talk to Mr. Markey about him conveying the land back to us for us to move forward with that type of relationship.
Correct.
Understanding, okay. And then the TIF, your idea on the, on the TIF?
The TIF is a item for the CRA and, uh, the CRA board should talk about it at, uh, their next meeting.
Well, uh, Mayor, I'd like to, to at least weigh in now because we have limited opportunity to discuss these if I, if I could.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, my, my personal position at, at this point in time, based on the, the financials that I've seen from city staff and how much money has already been invested in, uh, this partners to be developed properties just leads me to believe that I, I will not, under any circumstance, support another penny from the CRA because literally millions have been poured in for infrastructure. The city gave the land away. Um, you know, we're, we're into this for, for more money than any other developer has ever received in the history of the city, to my understanding. Um, you know, from, from combined incentives, it's, we're, we're into it for the tune of twenty million dollars when you account for all of, uh, you know, the, the cost that the city has borne and the, the packages that, that we plan to give. I just, I, I cannot plan B, plan B to a failure to be able to deliver on a contract is not give more money to the party that failed to deliver. And, and I, I cannot support that for any reason at this time.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna, yes, Mr. Hey.
Uh, just going along with, uh, piggybacking on, on the back of, uh, Commissioner Katz. As, just going along with Piggy Bank on, on the back of Commissioner Katz, especially when there was a, a list of requirements that been satisfied. So he needs to just man up and do what he agreed to do. And apparently, for whatever reason, he's not doing that. So I feel the same way that Commissioner Katz feel. I'm not ready to spend another dime on this. That's why we need to go back and take a look at this and see what, what is the best thing to do at this juncture for the city and the citizens who are, who are paying the, the tax dollars. And I wouldn't give him a, another TIF dollar. So that's where I am right now.
All right. So my, my perspective is a little bit different because any sort of TIF dollars that we, you know, provide to him is, is after the completion. So it's not necessarily current dollars that doesn't exist. This is money that comes after a certificate of occupancy where the property goes from not having an improvement to having improvement. In addition, we're able to hopefully get workforce housing, subsidized housing on the property so that we are doing what the county cannot do and create more affordable housing in the city of Boynton Beach. You know, we can require a community benefits agreement with the developer so that we know that he's reaching out to our community to help them along with the, the building. And the last is more parking spaces. And, you know, with the, as you've seen, the amphitheater, you know that there should be more parking spaces because more people are going to be wanting to come to downtown. So before, uh, you know, we say no, it's always a good idea to hear what they have to offer. If they're not offering anything more, then absolutely I would agree with Commissioner Katz and yourself. However, if they're offering more to do with that CRA money than what we could have done, what the CRA could have done alone, I think it's a something that we should hear. But, correct?
That's why we're directing the city manager and Jim and Colin, Colin, to go back and renegotiate and find out what, what is best for the city.
Yep. And the city and the CRA are two different things.
Right.
So, so we'll have this conversation in a week.
Same individuals.
Yes.
And Mayor, I had a, a question for legal if I could?
Yep.
Um, Jim, I'd, I'd asked you this earlier today on the phone, and I don't know if you have a definitive answer that you could provide, but is, is it my understanding that relative to any proposal for affordable housing on this project and, and, you know, respective of the TR, CRA and TIF, if, if the, the party in question defaults and is incapable of performing and the contract is broken, wouldn't any future development on this site automatically be subject to our affordable housing ordinance, which would mandate affordable housing by whoever took over the project? Whereas the current project was, was codified prior to the ordinance, will the, will it be mandatory that any other party, should they take over and develop this property, build affordable housing if a similar residential structure were, were moved forward?
And the answer is yes.
Hold on, Jim, are you saying our workforce housing ordinance is mandatory now?
The ordinance as drafted would apply to somebody new coming in. It doesn't apply to J K M because they came in before it was in place. That's the question posed.
No, no, no. The, the aspect of it is voluntary versus mandatory. Unless somebody wants to have workforce housing, they don't have to require anything. It's a voluntary workforce housing ordinance. It's not a mandatory workforce housing ordinance, even though it would apply if they ask for additional height or density.
Except for the fact that the city under this scenario would own the land and we could mandate anyone who took on the project to adhere to the, to the, that component of the ordinance. I guess...
That's correct. That's correct.
We could renegotiate the RFQ. I see what you're saying, but it's not a, to the ordinance.
Gotcha. But the point I guess I would try to make is I wouldn't be inclined to pay somebody for anything that we would get for free under the alternative scenario. I guess I'll close with that, like you said, CRA talk.
Yep.
Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner Romulus?
Yeah, I, I, I've listened to everyone and I kind of was waiting for the opportunity to speak, but we were all going back and forth. But one of the things I, I want to make sure that I expressed is that I think the easiest thing to accomplish from here is to get the first action done in, in terms of on Mr. Markey's side to just sign those easements and, and get that done and make sure that we are at least clear on that. Staff has done their work. We, we, you know, they've delivered, you know, above and beyond and, and on time or before time even, some of the requests that were made. So, you know, the, the ball's in his court. So I think, you know, just in, in good faith efforts and to show that there's a real partnership here to even, you know, show us that there's, there's a point in kind of getting to negotiation table. That's the first action that I need to see. From there, uh, yeah, I, I would definitely make sure that, you know, we, we get to the table and we, we have this discussion and it's a discussion that's been needing to be had for a very long time. And sadly, it took this long to, to finally happen. But, but I think, you know, we're seeing the writing on the wall and it's just necessary to at least, you know, figure out where we can go and, and, and try to make, you know, whatever next steps happen amicable for both parties. And as, you know, Commissioner Katz mentioned, that we make sure we protect our taxpayers because at the end of the day, they are the ones financing this. They are the ones putting their taxpayer dollars on the line in order to finance this project. And right now, you know, we have made a promise, or at least a developer has made a promise that they have not delivered on. And, and, you know, there is a timeline according to, you know, what I've seen. There is a timeline and there potentially is time to deliver the product within the timeline that's been given. But it, you know, in, in my opinion, I'm not really necessarily seeing good faith effort being put towards that timeline. So, uh, you know, I, I think it's time to go to the table, to the negotiation table and see where we need to go from here. And, um, you know, for, for both parties to be ready to, to do whatever needs to be done. So that's the direction that I'm willing to give staff to, to make sure we're protecting our taxpayers and we move forward in a, in a way that is beneficial to the vision that we've created for what this town square looks like. And if that means, you know, going back to square one, I, I'm willing to do that with a partner that is willing to deliver.
All right. Yes, Commissioner Hey?
Uh, question for Jim, I guess. Did we not have a reverter clause built into this contract that would state that, you know, just what Commissioner Romulus is saying? They didn't deliver that this reverted, reverted clause would, would kick in? Did that not happen?
We had an option provision in the original agreement and the conditions for releasing, for the city releasing its option occurred, which was impeding financing on the property. So there is no reverter provision in the document.
Is there any further comments from the commission?
Yes, Mayor?
Yep.
Um, I'd request with, I guess, consensus from the, the commission, if, if that's even necessary, that all future meetings between city staff and, and this partner and the project have minutes taken so that, that we can be kept aware of, of real-time discussions. I know that staff can, you know, talk to each of us after the fact and, and we can have these monthly reports from the, the developers, but given the trajectory that we appear on, I would like, I can't be in the room when they do these meetings because I work on everything during the day, but I would like to know what was said and, and what was accomplished or not accomplished in any future meetings relative to this particular part of the, the town square contract.
I fully support this.
I would support that as well.
So would I.
All right. And is there anything else?
I, I do have a question so that we're clear on how Lori and Colin and I should be proceeding. You know, we have written agreements that require J K M, Mr. Markey to fulfill certain responsibilities to build the project out. You are asking us to return to the negotiation table. And I want to be clear that I think that the first step in that process should be for, for J K M to take a look at those documents and come in with a proposal that clarifies how they would be modified if he intends to go forward with, with all of the, the, the project. If he does not intend to go forward with, with portions of the project, then whatever he drafts as a proposal to go forward should contain that. I, I don't think it would serve our purposes to go to the table and just look across the table and say, well, now what's going to happen? I think it needs to have more structure at this particular point. And the existing documents provide that structure. It's, it's not unusual to amend contracts. That happens all the time. But the best starting point to do that is for somebody to put that in writing. I'd like to, I'd like to see that occur first. I'd also like to suggest that Commissioner Romulus made the comment that this issue regarding the easements be taken care of as, you know, the, the first step. I think that's reasonable and I don't think that's very difficult to do. You will recall that at the last commission meeting, it was Mr. Markey that asked you to direct me to make certain that the easements get done. So that, to me, sounds like a signal that he's ready and his attorney says he's prepared to sign off on them. So we could get over that minor hurdle first. Written proposal by Mr. Mark, Mr. Markey second, a little time to study it and perhaps even consult with, with you individually or collectively on it and then meet with him and, and have these discussions, which we'll have minutes for. Does that sound like a reasonable approach?
Sound like a plan to me.
I, I'm in agreement.
Myself is, is, I agree as well.
Mayor, can I ask Jim if you could have some sort of timeline regarding this? I just don't want this to drag on forever. I don't think we're in a particular rush either, but I, I don't want this to last another year or two.
Yeah, that's a very good point, Vice Mayor. And the, the best people that I know to establish timelines, that, that legal and staff and Mr. Markey, of course, would, would want to adhere to would be the five of you. If you tell us, get it done in a month, report back to us in September sometime, that's the time period that we'll work with him. We'll, we'll write to him tomorrow morning and, I don't know, he may be watching now or I don't know if he's participating or not, or somebody is on his behalf. He could certainly watch this tomorrow morning. But we'll communicate that, you know, just tell us your deadline. Lori and I will work and Colin and I will work to make it happen.
I'd like to make that request that at the first meeting in September, you know, we have some information back and I, and I appreciate legal's guidance that I, I agree. If, if one party has indicated that they are having struggles and may be incapable of fulfilling the contract, that it, it should be their responsibility to, to dig a way out of this and present a plan, not city staff to, to try to help, you know, dig out of a hole that we didn't create, at least at this early stage.
I like the first meeting in September as well. I'm in agreement with that.
I agree.
Thank you. That's a lot of time. We should be able to report back to you with, with no difficulty by then.
Agreed. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to legal, proposed resolution number R 20 dash 078, approve the parking division fee schedule associated with installation of automated parking technology, which includes parking rates, permits, valet violation, valet violations and penalties. Do we have a presentation on that?
Yes, I believe Andrew has the, or Alan, you'll have to pull that up, the PowerPoint we did.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Andrew Mack, Director of Public Works. I do have the, the previous presentation I did at the last hearing and I did update it with some of the, the items that you guys wanted to see. Real quickly, just from our previous discussion during the ordinance approval, I wanted to recap. I looked at my notes and so far this year, we've issued 330 boat decal, or boat permits at Oyer Park. So I also did a little digging as well as far as what Lake Worth and Boca charge for their boat ramp, annual permits. So Boca charges $60 for Palm Beach County residents and then 480 for non-Palm Beach County residents. Lake Worth, they charge 50 for Florida residents and then $150 for commercial and non-Florida residents. That's, that's the, the annual parking permit at those two locations. So if you go down through the slides, we'll, we'll skip the slides out and go to, to where we started the comparison. Next slide. There you go. So I did update the, the, the proposed rates as we got the consensus at the last meeting. The resident parking pass at the beach is going to remain $50. We, we proposed that as it's no change. Same, similarly, we'll have a, a senior parking permit and I think in the future we'll, we'll include veterans and disabled persons in, in that part as well, to include it in that. It'll be as $50 as well. And then, and then this is you have your rate comparison. Again, you see that you have the, the proposed rates versus Delray, Lake Worth and Boca. Next slide. Next, there you go. And then Commissioner Romulus asked us to see what the revenue was projected at. Our current revenue, this fiscal year amended revenue for daily parking rates is 320,000 and then parking permits is 170,000. So proposed for next fiscal year, we're proposing 680,000 for daily parking, 50,000 for citations and 170 for parking permits. One thing I was asked to do was to look at if we were to lower the rate on the weekdays to a dollar, what would that fiscal impact be? It would roughly be about a 21% reduction in the daily parking fees, which equates to about $142,000. And I, I leave it up to you now. As far as the, the boat decal or boat, boat parking, parking permit, we can add that. If you, if amend your, the, the resolution to add that, we can add that and then I'll get it corrected for publishing. And just like I said, at, at Lake Worth, I know that you mentioned the commercial. So a $150 rate is what they charge in Lake Worth. In my mind, that seems pretty fair, a number to, to put out there for commercial and non-resident, or, well, we can't charge non-residents from residents, but for commercial fishermen or for, for residents that want to use it on an ongoing basis.
So... So how many spots are the Lake Worth boat ramp?
They don't have as many as, as we do. I, I don't have the exact number. It's not on their website. I, I have to look on their map. It's a much, much smaller location. It is right there off of the bridge.
And so...
So, so, Mr. Mayor, Colin Groff, there was two questions you had during the ordinance. One was the passes for boat parking. And again, as Andrew said, that'd be fairly easy to add. The other thing you may want to consider right now, commercial fishermen during the weekday, if we added a pass, you know, we may want to recommend during the weekday have the pass, but during the weekend, maybe the pass would not be valid because weekends is when it's really busy and when we need to control it. The commercial fishermen usually are during the weekdays. So there may be, you know, if, if, if everybody is interested in moving forward with that pass, we probably need to do a little bit of work on that to figure out what the best recommendation we can make to you is. The other issue brought up was, that was brought up was the 10 parking spaces in Oyer Park. It would be very easily to mark those as the, for cars only. We could mark those, you know, if, if it was your desire during the weekday, because right now it would be free during the weekday or the weekend to use those. You'd pay the $10. But we could very easily mark those at a, either a different rate on the weekends or just the free parking. And then if you're parked in there, you wouldn't pay for parking. And when the, when the truck went by to look at the license tags, those wouldn't be looked at. So, so... when the truck went by to look at the license tags, those wouldn't be looked at. So so you could have ten spaces that'd be free just for cars, for people who just want to enjoy the park. But if you're in one of the boat parking spaces, even if you don't have a boat trailer, you would have to pay.
So, yeah, I think that's good regarding the ten car spaces to be free. And I would assume that the the handicapped car parking spaces would also be in the included for free as well.
Yes, it would be any space designed for a single car, not a trailer.
Okay. You know, as for the the amount of the annual pass being three fifty versus one fifty of Lake Worth, I'd like to keep it the way it is because you know, we don't necessarily know what it's going to happen and it's subject to change by a resolution next year. So I'd rather go higher and then lower it down if it's not being used properly, rather than having too many people do this and not really having the function of the the metered parking at boat ramp. So. I'll weigh on the the commission to see if, one, you want to have the annual pass at boat ramp? And then the second would be what the to charge.
So, Mr. Mayor, I was going to give you the math on that three fifty. That would mean the first fourteen, you would be paying the regular rate after fourteen days. Weekend, weekend days, you would be then not paying. So you would be getting a good discount after the fourteen weekends or week weekend days. So and then during the week, of course, it would be a little bit more if you're using during the week, but the three fifty for our usage does sound like a good starting place to make sure we recover the money that we're making now on the weekends. And and we we start getting some funding from the commercial fishermen during the week to help pay for the boat ramp. So just as a recommendation, I think we would staff that's that's a good place to start. If you if you want to move forward with a pass.
All right. Not hearing anything, I'll just request the the motion as stated.
Mayor, I did tell you that I do support an annual pass option. The only thing that I'm trying to figure out is that three hundred number. It is, it sounds very steep. And, you know, if somebody else wants to weigh in, I that's the only part right now that I'm struggling to figure out, but I think having an annual pass is a good thing.
You know, it's, you know, I I don't have a boat, so how much does gasoline normally cost for four hours, five hours out on the boat?
It could be a hundred and fifty dollars, something in that range. It's it's quite expensive to run a boat.
That that's kind of where I I got my number. I feel that, you know, thirty five days of weekday parking, fourteen days of weekend parking or the combination thereof is a good starting point. Because if you're doing a commercial fisher, you know, especially with the COVID nineteen, they've been going out on a very routine basis. And so I don't feel that it is exorbitant. The aspect of it is for non-commercial use, I'd like to basically adjust that so you know, hopefully next year we can have a rate for res, you know, for recreational and one for commercial. But right now, as we have never done this, charged during the week, I feel that the three fifty, it's less than a dollar a day. And that's one of the other reasons why I came up with that number. Commissioner Hay?
I I sort of feel the same way that Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor is is stating. Trying to rassle with that that three fifty figure, but I guess this is one of those times where I'm going to going to rely on our staff and 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 trust them based on what they've stated. That that's a good place to start. I don't own a boat either, but I feel that they've done their homework and in this case, I'm going to lean on them. So I would go along with what their recommendation with the three fifty.
Mayor, a dollar a day is not unreasonable. Especially if you put it that way, that makes it the easiest to understand. I I'm going to go ahead and support this. A dollar a day is is not too much to ask for.
All right, well, it's it's a little less than a dollar a day.
Yes, yes, yes.
All right, so may I have that motion as amended to allow for boat ramp parking pass at three hundred fifty dollars for all? You know.
Before we move on.
Yep.
Before we move on to the motion, I just wanted to clarify in regards to the I guess, just a regular person going to the park, because I think that was my issue of contention, which was, I believe, raised by Ms. Oyer and also Commissioner Hay. So if a person is going to the park, just kind of bring their kids to go play, what you're responsible for paying is the parking meter. Is that is that correct, my understanding?
No, there are ten free spots that are for vehicles without a trailer. In addition, we are going to be working with the the local Coast Guard Auxiliary to give an exemption to their members as well for meetings or create a certain plan for them. And so I I believe we'll we'll have to do that in the the motion as well to negotiate with the Coast Guard Auxiliary.
With those, those ten slots for the regular cars is free.
Yes, and we will have signage there.
So clarify for me, where are the parking meters coming in then?
For all of the the spots for trailer. So the long parking spots will have the meters.
Oh, I see. So the meters are only for the trailers and then if somebody wants, if somebody knows that they'll be frequenting the park more often, they can then opt for a yearly pass, which is a three hundred and fifty.
Correct.
Okay, I I am in agreement with those options. I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
I have a question before you can ask a question. Do those need to be two separate motions regarding designating the first ten, the ten normal parking spots as as free?
Jim?
That should be two motions, so we're clear on it and there's agreement on both.
So some so moved with the the first motion will be for the ten free spots. Jim, am I correct on that motion?
Yes, you are.
Okay.
I second that.
All right.
Either or.
So, any further discussion on the ten free spots at a Harvey Oyer Junior Boat Ramp Park? Saying none, all those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. The second motion would.
Right, the second motion would be for the annual cost along with creating a permit, I guess, process for the Coast Guard people? Anything else I need to add to this motion, Jim?
No.
Okay.
The rate of three fifty?
At a rate of three fifty.
Second that motion.
Thank you. Is any further discussion from the City Commission? Saying none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to proposed resolution, R twenty dash zero seven nine, authorize the City Commission to increase the amount collected for fees that are charged to the city by Beach County Clerk of Courts when a civil citation is issued.
Let me, let me just comment that there's money waiting for us to ask for it, and this is the vehicle for asking for it.
All right, I have that motion. Any discussion from the commission? Saying none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Item twelve C, proposed ordinance twenty dash thirty. Jim?
An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, authorizing the city manager and city clerk to make provisions for public meetings by use of communication media technology and for attendance by use of such technology by elected and appointed officials during periods when the City Commission determines and declares a local public health emergency or other circumstances, which the commission determines necessary to protect the health and safety of city officials, city staff and the public, providing for this ordinance to control in the event of a conflict with other ordinances, providing for separability, providing for an effective date. I'm, I know I seem like I'm beating a drum on this issue, and it's on for first reading as opposed just for discussion because the clock is running on how much longer we are permitted under the governor's emergency orders to conduct virtual meetings. The last emergency order that the governor issued created quite a conflict for local government. It said that we could have our September budget hearings by use of technology to conduct those meetings, but it did not, at the same time, extend the the drop dead date for regular city commission meetings, which will be August the thirty first. Now, we expect the governor's office to fix that inconsistency between now and September the first, but you just don't know. They've not been communicating with with local government very much about the implications of these emergency ordinances. So this is a methodology to put that decision in the hands of the City Commission under the city's Home Rule Powers, Declaration of Emergency Authorization of Virtual Meetings in September for regular city commission meetings if necessary. If it's fixed by the governor before the second reading of this, we won't even need it, but this is kind of an opportunity to make sure that we're not cut cut off September the first on conducting regular city commission meetings virtually.
So moved, and thank you, Jim, for your forththought.
Second, the motion.
All right, is there any discussion from the City Commission? Saying none. Alan, do we need to open this up for public comments? So if anybody wants to raise their hand or ask a question? Because it is an ordinance. I don't see anybody. Not seeing anybody. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pensarca?
Yes.
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Aye.
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Vote is five a.
Thank you.
Does the commission have anything that they'd like to put on for future agenda? All right, you know, I I see that there's only two items, so I feel like I need to put some more things on there. So one of the things that I had the conversation with Colin Groff on was the internship programs that we have here in the city of Boynton Beach. Because now that we have this wonderful new city hall, we actually have a lot of empty desks compared to the other, the temporary city hall. And so I'd like, you know, a presentation on the internship program that we have here and to see how we can expand it with the the new facilities that we have coming up with the with City Hall, library and the civic center. So, the the second thing that I was thinking about regarding equity and career education is that we have a lot of resources with our employees who are in drop and fifteen, that have been here for a while. And I kind of was thinking that we have a combination of a marketing department to work with the the city staff who would like to, you know, do a career fair. Because, you know, we're not necessarily going to be able to go out to the the schools coming up. And I'd like to give an opportunity for the young adults in our city to learn more about how did our staff get to where they are? And what do they have to go to school for? And what jobs did they have at the beginning? And do like a five to ten minute interview for the different positions here in the city. So I'll I'll see if anyone else feels the same way about that before we put it on future agenda.
Mayor. Mayor, I like the idea. I think it's great, especially when you think of some of the nonprofits that are operating in this base of trying to help young students advance their careers or advance their future. This is very important, so I'm I'm in agreement.
Commissioner Katz, you had a comment?
Yeah, so is is the request to ultimately have city staff conduct interviews of of kind of, you know, random students who would attend and?
No. I'm asking for our marketing department to interview city staff for people who would like to educate the community about how they got to where they are.
So.
For example, you know, we we missed our opportunity on Wally Majors. How did he start as a lifeguard to become the Director of Parks and Recreation?
Like a testimonial, Mayor, kind of?
You know, it's it's kind of like using the the Career Day that we used to go to the schools and educate them what we did. You know, to have that as an option. And so it's also educating the public about the people who work in the city.
I have, I have to agree, Mayor, because I I've had this conversation here and there with multiple staff persons, and a lot of people don't think about these types of jobs, these careers, when they think of public service. They only know about elected public service. And so anything to get the word out about what exactly does being a city manager entail? Or Parks and Rec Director, I, so I I'm on board with that. There is something I'd like to add, but I'll wait until the end.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, Commissioner Romulus.
Um, my suggestion, I'm I'm kind of saying this with the caveat that I know our marketing department is inundated with a whole bunch of stuff, so I wouldn't want to add another thing to their plate. Perhaps we can find a way to put the call out there and see if there are any nonprofit organizations that would want to kind of, you know, champion this with us and and kind of maybe do the the work. So I I think we can find some that would be more than willing to do that, do that, produce the videos, you know, get the content out there. I I think there's there's a potential there for some good partnership opportunities.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner Hay?
I'm all for the idea. It sounds great, but it's been a couple of mango seasons since I was in school. But the question here that we used to call it Career Day. And that basically, I guess, Justin can probably answer the question, is are they still doing that type of thing in the schools where they would have representatives from the city, from different businesses to come out and talk about basically what you're saying? And we call that Career Day. Is that still going on, Commissioner Katz?
Yes, sir, absolutely. You know, in in different incarnations, depending on the grade level, you know, of elementary, middle and high school, but there are a a lot of teachers and and schools, you know, on the whole setup opportunities for either parents or career professionals. With all the academies and magnet programs we have now, a lot of these kids are like, they're learning about careers through their course studies, so they they see professionals come in and absolutely lend, you know, insight and and all that stuff. So, yes.
Okay. And and Mayor, that's somewhat what you're talking about and that there's kind of correlation there somehow?
Correct, you know, we're, because we're not going to go to the schools this upcoming semester. So it's an aspect not only for the students and young adults, it's an aspect of the our residents here and businesses to learn a little bit more about, you know, what goes on at the city hall. Because you talk to a regular resident, they may have no idea what goes on in our building department and planning and zoning. And they're understood, don't understand why they need to get so many permits when they're when they're doing something to their house.
Mayor?
Yes.
We already have a volunteer, woo hoo. And that Gray just kind of chimed in, sent me a text message, so we could probably talk with her and see how we can create that partnership. I'm also thinking about other organizations like Path to College, Dress for Success, what's that other one with Tay? I think we have lots of opportunities. For seniors, yep, yep. So, yeah.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
So I, I support a a discussion on future. So I I support a a discussion on future agenda items. One thing I would throw out, I guess, but prior to that is to to give consideration to if we move forward with this, to asking the city manager to identify which staff and or department might be the most appropriate. I know that marketing's been thrown out there, but I see, you know, marketing might be the proper venue to advertise or promote this. But I don't know if it's, it's not marketing's purview to interview employees and conduct surveys and and all that, I don't think. Um.
Probably.
So I'll I'll actually explain, um, so our Facebook Live regarding our parking meters with Andrew Mack. So there's been multiple times, especially during the the informational sessions with our Chief Carter for the hurricane. So the reason why I said the marketing department is because they have the equipment to to do this. Um, but yes, I don't think they have the the ability to do the video editing. And so it's something that uh we could reach out to other nonprofits and hopefully create more of a partnership with them uh for career education.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to add something to the agenda.
Um, yes.
I'd like to put on the topic of municipal wifi. We've touched on that before. And um I discovered that it is actually part of the school district plan uh to build some infrastructure. And so I'd like to invite perhaps Erica Whitfield or some other staff person uh from the Technology Division to give us a presentation. Uh, what exactly does that entail for Boynton? Uh, what are they doing? Um, and what do they need from us if they need anything at all? And so I'd just like for them to come on and uh share that information.
Absolutely. Uh, I've had multiple talks with Colin regarding the the city's municipal uh fiber optic backbone. And so, you know, we could partner with other agencies. Um, I I'm more than happy to do that. And then the the last, yes, Commissioner Ramus.
Right, and to kind of get you back off of that conversation, I I sent an email prior to meeting, so I'm not sure if you guys had a chance to take a look at it. But I did have a conversation with the Ed Education Foundation in regards to the conversation we had last commission meeting um in terms of what can we as a municipality do to help our our school districts and our local schools within our our municipality boundaries? Um, and I I, you know, put some ideas there and and there are some things that the Education Foundation um wants to do in partnership with us. So, uh, you know, if you guys haven't had a chance to take a look at your emails and um I'd love to maybe either discuss it next commission meeting and kind of see what what we like to do. Um, school starts in less than, you know, a couple of now, so we, you know. Yeah, yeah, it starts at the thirty first. So, um, you know, we have some things we can do right now leading up to that. And then we also have some things we can do um even after school starts, because there's still a lot of uh infrastructure needs that they need to kind of get get things going.
All right. Excellent. So, yeah, I'd like to have a conversation um regarding uh a stew new business for the education in the city of Boynton Beach.
Now, there's a lot of things on future agenda.
Yes.
Your wish got granted.
Yes, exactly.
Thank you. All right, is there anything else before we adjourn? So. All right, meeting adjourned. Alan, would you provide the the closing? Alan, you still there? Gary, do you have the closing? All right, you want to give it to me and I'll read it? All right, Gary, you want to read it? Here's another microphone. So, the exit script, as a reminder, a recorded version of the session will be posted to the city of Boynton Beach YouTube channel. Links to that channel are available on the city of Boynton Beach website at www dot Boynton hyphen beach dot org. This concludes today's meeting. On behalf of Mayor Grant and all of our elected officials, the city manager and city staff, thank you for attending today's city of Boynton Beach City Commission meeting. Be safe and have a great evening.
Have a good night, everybody.
Night, everybody.
Bye bye.
Good night, everyone.
And I'm going to hit stop recording.